We've got ceremonial items.
None.
Welcome to February 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, if you guys bow with me. Lord, thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Thank you for this council. Thank you for this town. Lord, we hope that you'll be with us in our decisions and our words tonight and lead us into a great weekend and be with our soldiers, our police, and all of our civil service. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wanted to give a quick update. Many people have noticed the absence of Ms. Skels Harris, and I know she watches every Thursday night, but got to spend some time with her on Saturday, went and saw her, and so she's in good health and on the mend. So I know she'll continue to be in our thoughts and prayers, but I think she is on the road to recovery. All right, we have no ceremonial items, and you have several items on your consent agenda.
There are no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have the minutes of the February 4th special meeting, February 4th regular meeting, February 11th special meeting, and then the February 11th regular meeting. We'll note that we had a typo on our website, and it was listed as the January 11th meeting, but I want to clarify that it's the February 11th meeting for the regular meeting.
With that change, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Second readings will consider for passage on second reading ordinance 16OZ01 to rezonate an area located along Gresham Lane to residential multifamily 16, RM 16, District 2015-429.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 16OZ02 to rezonate an area located along Dill Lane to residential multifamily 12, RM 12, District 2015-432.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 16OZ03 to rezonate an area located along Franklin Road to Commercial Fringe, CF District 2015-433.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We're moving to new business. I was going to say no business. Moving to new business, and we'll have our presentation from Jimmy Joe with Joe Hastings and Associates with regards to the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year June 30th, 2015. And Mr. Joe, the thing when we always see you, that means that we know that the budget's coming up for June of 2016, so please go.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate you all having us here. We'd just like to acknowledge that we had a lot of good help from Melissa Wright and Aaron Tucker, and we just really appreciate their hard work, and in fact, they're some of the hardest, most committed people we work with, and we're just really appreciative of their help. The report, as usual, will be posted on the website, so anyone who is interested can find it there. You'll see it's getting, it gets thicker and thicker every year. It's about, it's over 180 pages this year. It's beginning to resemble a Tom Clancy novel, but although it doesn't have quite the intrigue, so I'll try to keep it brief tonight. If you'll turn just to the, there's a tab in here that says independent auditors' report. And that is our report on the financial statements, and once again, this is a unmodified or clean opinion for the city's June 30th, 15 report. The only thing that's unusual here is there is a new accounting standard for governments which involves pensions that came out this year. Basically, that requires the city to record a liability for, the actuarial liability for all the future pension payouts for the deferred benefit plans, whatever that liability exceeds the assets that you have. So that's a new standard that all governments are dealing with. There's about 20 pages of description of the pension plan back in the footnotes from page 67 through 87, so it's gotten a lot of coverage and has a huge impact. Once again, the city did receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is the 17th straight year, and that's an award, as you remember, from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is an organization out of Chicago, a national organization. They actually go through this report. Committee reviews this report to see if it meets their high standards, and once again, it has met those standards, and we expect this one to meet those standards as well. It's been submitted. If you'll turn to the tab that says just behind management's discussion and analysis, since this is such a lengthy report, this is a good description in just a few pages, maybe 15 pages or so, of what has happened in the city as far as economic conditions, financial highlights, an overview of the operations for the year and the budget, and it gives some graphs to tell the user what the revenue sources of the city are. A lot of good information in here, so that's a good place to start if someone's interested in what's going on with the city and its finances. Another tab, the government-wide financial statements, which is just past that on page You'll see that this first presentation is called the statement of net position. That's the, shows all the assets and liabilities of the city. This presentation includes everything the city owns, including infrastructure, fixed assets, buildings, not just assets that can be spent during the budget, but all the assets of the city. And you'll see there in the total column, there's two columns, one for government activities and one for the business type activities, which would include the sewer and electric departments. The total assets for the city as of June 30th are $1.5 billion. And you'll see down at the bottom right-hand corner, the total net position, or the total assets over the liabilities of the city were a billion, excuse me, and 55 million at the end of June. Flip on the back of that page, and this is a presentation of the general functions of the government, and it starts with the expenses of that function. So for instance, if you look, the second description is the police department, and for the year, it had total expenditures of just over $26 million. And as you go across to the right, it shows the revenues that would support those operations. The police department has just minimal supportive revenue, so you'll see going across, there's 409,000 in charges for services, which would include citations, that sort of thing. And then there are some grants that are police-related, and you'll see that the total net cost is $25 million, which is costs that has to be supported through taxes and other general revenue sources. And each function, fire and rescue, judicial, engineering, they're all presented as the cost and what the net cost of the city would be for each of those functions. If you flip behind the next tab to fund financial statements, this presentation is just more on a budget approach, so it only includes assets that are spendable, like cash, or that are soon converted to cash, like receivables. And so it's more of a current approach. How is the city prepared for the next budget year? And you'll see just in the general fund column, total assets are $113 million. Liabilities are $9.3 million. And down at the bottom, under fund balances, you'll see that the general fund had a total fund balance of $61,938,000. Put that in perspective, if you see the unassigned portion is $53,900,000, that's approximately seven months of expenditures. So in other words, the city could receive no revenues and operate for seven months without having a problem. So that's a pretty solid position to be in. Flip over to page 25, and this is a presentation of the revenues and expenditures for the year ended June 30th of 15. And you'll see there, the general fund had total expenditures of $119 million and had expenditures of just over 88 million, or 88,900,000. And then the school fund, general purpose school fund, includes the city schools, and those are the major funds of the city presented there. As you go further back in the report, there's more detail about any of those funds, and specifically, the next two pages over, the general fund is presented in detail, and this compares the budget for the year to the expenditures. And if you flip to the last page, which is page 36, that's the end of the general fund statement, and you'll see for the year, the budget was $95.1 million. The actual expenditures were $88.9 million, so there was $6.1 million under budget for And the same information's presented for the general purpose school fund and the other The notes to financial statements are behind that tab. I won't go through all those, but there's, like I said, there's lots of information about the pensions and the other accounting policies of the city, a lot of information about debt and capital assets of the city and infrastructure is presented, so you can find a lot there. And let's go back to the back. There's a tab at the, almost at the very back called statistical section. These schedules show a lot of information over a 10-year span, and it gives an idea to someone interested that, how the growth of the city has happened over these 10 years. For instance, go to page 153. At the bottom, there's a presentation of the last 10 fiscal years of various types of taxes. You'll see the sales tax in particular has gone from 2006 at $24 million to this past year in 2015 to over 37 million. So that gives an indication of the growth in retail sales that have occurred in the city over that 10-year span. And behind the last tab, the single audit section, this itemizes all the federal grants and state grants that the city received for the year. So there's a listing of the departments, the federal department that those funds came from, and how much was received and how much was spent on those programs through the city. And in the back four pages are just a summary of all this information. It indicates that we had an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. It discloses any findings. In an organization this size, there's going to be, typically be some sort of findings. These are not anything very concerning, but there's some recommendations there. And I think that would be a summary there, Mr. Mayor. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you all might have.
Gotcha.
I get to speak to many different groups in the, looking over the budgets and the numbers that Mr. LaLance had given us this year. Unless I'm missing out, this was the first year that our sales tax exceeded our property tax, that going back and never seen that happen before. So I think that goes, one of the things to show that although all the people who come and shop in our places, they do contribute to traffic, it helps us keep our, the good thing is, they leave, and we don't educate them, and we don't have to, yeah, build sewer and all those things. So it is helping keep our property tax lower.
That's a great point.
Mr. LaLance?
Couple of questions I have was, one, just that brings up a point that I guess I would, a bigger picture question would be that, you know, is there any risk in that from a standpoint of, you know, if the economy slows down, you know, does that mean a larger part of our revenues might be affected by something like that? I mean, is that, that may not be a fair question to ask you, and if it's not, just say so, we'll ask somebody else, but is that?
Well, I think that's a reasonable assumption, that if the economy does decline, it'll have some impact on that. But you can see from this 10-year summary that they've consistently gone up even in '08 and '09, and in those years that things were pretty tough, that the taxes were still pretty steady or trending upwards even in those years.
One of the things that I had written down, I just was kind of thinking, it popped in my head when he said that, but if you go to page 147, is it a, and that's under the statistical section back there. If you look at the expenses going back 10 years, you know, and all I really looked at was the governmental activities expense, and I'm not really sure, I guess that's a net number, is that what you said, or is that?
This number, this number here is a total expenses.
Total, okay.
For government.
So if I look at that, what I, you know, if I look at where we were in '06 to where we are now, it's about a 39% or 40% increase. Our expenses went from 132 million to 183 million last year, right?
Right.
Correct. And so if I just kind of flip the next page and look at, I mean, is it, maybe it's not fair to do this, but if I look at our program revenues during that same period, they're only up about 29%. Can you connect the two of those things at all, or should you connect those? I mean, to me, obviously, you want to see, I mean, I know they're...
Well, there is some fluctuations in some of those revenues because they include grants, like for instance, the city schools received a share of the county bonds this year, which was a large chunk, and some of that's going to vary by year. So it may not be as easy to compare the revenues.
Yeah, okay.
Taxes are generally trend pretty well, but these are, these are items other than...
And Mr. Joe, your road construction would be included in that as well when you look at state street aid, streets and signs, and then also like under engineering, where we've got 15 million and 14 million, I think, are those, those are road constructions, so it may vary with what we have going under construction.
That's true.
That makes that number fluctuate.
Yeah, especially capital outlay type items would vary by what you've got going on.
I suspect there's a ratio somewhere around, along the way somewhere, but is it appropriate to try to attach that expenditure number to our population to kind of know, you know, gauging how fast we're growing relative to how fast our expenses are growing? Does that, is that appropriate?
I think that would be, that would be a good gauge to consider, yes.
Or how much our population grew.
Another one is debt per capita. There's, and there's a presentation in here somewhere about that, that there's a lot of statistics like that that you could watch.
I have a question about the last four pages there, and I just, I don't under, what is the low-risk audity that we didn't qualify for? What is the advantage of qualifying, and what does that mean?
That basically means that we as auditors have to do, we have to assess whether the entity we're auditing is a low-risk audity or a higher-risk audity, especially for when it involves federal money.
Oh, okay.
And because you haven't had findings in federal grants, and because things have, we found to be good, then we can assess it a lower, lower risk audity, and that means our procedures don't have to cover as much ground.
Have we ever qualified for that?
And I don't know particularly, there's certain things that just, you could have had a finding in one grant that was an unusual grant one year, and that would keep you the next year from having that. So it's unusual. This is probably an unusual event, but...
I have a question for Mr. Cromwell. I'm intrigued by the fact that our sales tax and our property tax are, sales tax is, is that, how unusual is that in the state of Tennessee, that our sales tax would equal or be higher than?
I can't say that actually, no. I've not looked at that.
Is there anything special about that?
Just means we've got a good economy that people like to shop here.
And we've got a lot of county residents that live outside the city, but do all their major shopping in the city, and we reap that reward?
Not only Rutherford County residents, but other counties.
Okay.
And I think we sent a letter out to the city council, but like in this past month, we were 64% of the total sales tax income that was generated in Rutherford County was generated by the city of Murfreesboro. I think it was to the tune of like $9.6 million was generated by the city, just in last month. So it was almost three-quarters of the total income was brought in by the city.
Those were your Christmas shopping numbers this past month?
Any questions for Mr. Joe? Mr. Smotherman, you look, you're pondering something there.
I'm good.
All right.
Mr. Joe did an excellent job.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to say is, you know, it's, when I left, I saw this document. I'm not sure I understand it any clearer this time, but it is amazing, the amount of information is in here. It's no light reading to look at this document. It certainly is difficult to dissect, but it is amazing, the amount of information that you've accumulated, and as always, it's an exceptional job that your company and you do to prepare this document for the city.
I've been having trouble sleeping lately, and I pulled this out, knocked me right out.
Well, even I'm going to read the Tom Clancy, not this.
In my next life, you can explain it all.
Ms. Wright, thank you for your hard work and your team's hard work. I know a lot of the praise that Mr. Joe is, when he's looking through this, it's a big job to keep up with, so we appreciate what you do.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to myself.
Yep.
If we could give everybody a Star's Award, they would get a Star's Award.
I think we ought to do that, Mayor. Any motion to accept the document?
Yeah, can we have a motion to accept the audit?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Joe, you also, if you want to audit something with Ms. Wright, you can go back and look at the past city council meetings and see how many times she's called me Mayor Bragg, so you can audit that.
We'll put that at the back.
Actually, I'm sure Shane's been keeping up with that.
I have.
You probably don't need to spend any time on that. I think he's got that memorized.
He's going to pull it out sometime in the years.
Consider recommendations of the fire and rescue chief improvement agreement with Johnson and Bailey Architects for new fire station number four on Medical Center Parkway. Chief Foulks.
Mayor, members of council, it's our recommendation to approve this agreement pending the law departments, the legal departments review of this contract with Johnson and Bailey for the design elements of station four, the new proposed station four to be located on Medical Center Parkway.
Chief, three bays?
At least, yes.
Let's go for four while we're doing it.
Yeah, we do plan on it being a three-bay fire station.
Rob, do you hear that?
Yes, sir. Looking at that.
Since we're building it on Medical Center Parkway, I assume that we're, we will have to make sure that we meet all the gateway standards and landscaping and all those things.
Correct. We'll have a design review with this.
This is going to be an expensive station.
Mm-hmm.
Be a good one, I mean, a good one for the area. Any questions?
May we accept, accept the recommendation of the fire chief?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thanks, Chief. Consider recommendations of the city manager with revisions to employee handbook, section 1041, employee timekeeping.
Mayor, members of council, I bring to you an employee handbook clarification. This is not necessarily a new policy, but really clarifying some language that's in the handbook. We do believe in having our process and our policy aligned, and with the implementation of our new automated timekeeping system, we felt this language clarification regarding employee attendance and how the time cards work was in order, so the language there is before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is not a new practice. This is merely clarifying what we've been doing in the past as well as how we're going to handle it in the future.
Somebody's got any questions? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Wright, beer permits?
We do have some tonight, Mayor. We have a special event permit for the Center of the Arts for an event to occur on March the 19th at their location as a fundraiser. We have our first catering beer permit for Peter D's. This is, this is a new permit that the legal department, specifically Mr. Tucker, helped us get started, and the requirements are that they have to already have gotten their ABC permit for catering, and they have done that, and they have a... that, and they have a current valid onsite permit. So, they have met all of our requirements to add this permit to their location. And then we have a hotel that is asked for a permit at 1453 Silo Hill Lane. And we're waiting on inspections from the Building Codes Department before that permit could be approved and issued, but we ask your permission to approve it once that is done.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have a couple of Board and Commission appointments that will be for next week. We've got three that were the Airport Commission, Evergreen Cemetery Board, and the North Highland Avenue Study Area and Historic Bottom Study Area Steering Committee Recommendations. All right. Any other business from, excuse me, payment and statements?
We don't have any tonight, Mayor.
Any other business from staff or city council? All right. See you none. We'll stand adjourned.